All right, we'll call to order the city council meeting. I have to do that so that staff will sit down and people stop talking. Call to order the city council meeting. It is Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024, according to the things in front of me. All seven council members are present and accounted for. The mayor is here along with a lot of staff. We welcome you and some citizens and people watching and participating. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our wonderful Patrick Voice.
Will the audience please rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, now we have a special recognition on the agenda, so I'll turn some time to Mayor Burton.
Thank you. As you know, there's a piece of property across the street from us that we have called our city center for several years. And over those years, staff has created different plans and presented that to the city council. And none of them were really what the city council was looking for. Finally, on this last round, when staff got it and we got a grant from West Hatch Mountain Regional Council and UTA was involved, they met with the council prior to making it and during the process. And as a result of that, staff was able to create a plan that would pass the council unanimously. Not only did that plan pass the council unanimously, but when it went to West Hatch Mountain Regional Council, they were so excited about that. I heard so many comments about this plan and how it had unique features in there. And they thought it showed some great imagination. It was different than the other plans they saw. And then when it got to UTA, they jumped up and down as well and thought that was a very exciting plan. And they're happy to be participants on this with us. And as a result of that, the word got around of what this plan looked like, and it made it over to the American Planners Association, Utah chapter. And it won an award there. And so I want to have Scott come up and share with us who our planners are, the participatedness and made this work. And we're going to give them this plaque that they provided for us.
Thanks, Mayor. You heard the mayor. Come on up. Counsel, this is, tonight, I think, is a celebration of collaboration. A lot of work, a lot of effort has gone into this plan. And there were, what, four, I think, four general plans that were recognized at the APA conference this last October, or I guess earlier this month. And let me just read a little snippet from the press release. So this award was created to address the both urban and rural planning needs here in the state of Utah, and it recognizes the outstanding contributions to the planning field. Specifically, this award honors the written plan, as you've all seen it, and that advances the science and art of planning and brings awareness to the benefits of good planning. The award recognizes, recognize the excellence in planning for livable and sustainable communities with public engagement and realistic goals. As the mayor indicated, a lot of effort, including your effort, made this plan what it is. Collaboration and unity were paramount. And what makes this award stand out from the other awards that were handed out is that this is multi-jurisdictional, meaning there is collaboration across borders and boundaries. In a world that seemingly is more and more divided, I'm really grateful that West Jordan was recognized through this award in the power of unity and building strength through collaboration. And it is a blessing that I have to come to work every day with Taylor and Mark and Megan and the other planners. They are testaments to their dedication to their career, their profession, and their love of West Jordan. So with that, I'm grateful that we had counsel engaged, especially Councilman Green and Whitelock in the development of this plan. And if we're truly going to take this plan and make it an award-winning community, we'll need continued collaboration through the school district, UTA, private public partners. And we have a great potential across the street. So please join with me in recognizing these great efforts.
Scott, did you want to say their names?
Sure. Taylor Jensen, Mark Forsyth, and Megan Jensen. No relation. We are very blessed in West Jordan to have some fantastic planning staff. And you don't need to hear that. You see them all the time here at your meetings, so. Chair.
Would you like to do a picture? Like to get them, one, four, good, come up and mayor come up? And do we want to step down or just stand up here? Okay, we'll step down. It's not that big of a group, I guess. Well, thank you for that. And we do know that we have an awesome planning staff and that they do good work. Thank you so much for that special recognition. We'll go now to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is your opportunity to weigh in on issues facing West Jordan, hopefully. And we give you three minutes, a pop. Generally, if you're online, you need to raise your hand on the Zoom. If you're dialed in, that means star nine is how you raise your hand. And we'll go to anybody in the room who'd like to address the council first. Like, there's not a huge crowd, but.
I'm Anne Marie Barrett, the manager of the Bingham Creek Library. And I just have a few things I wanted to share with you that are going on at the library right now and coming up shortly. We've got some really fun holidays right now that we're celebrating. We've got a wonderful display with information about Dwali and a coloring sheet. People can come in and take and color at the library or at home if they like. We also have a ofrenda for Dia de los Muertos in our library with an ice spy activity to go along with that. And of course, next week on Halloween, we have a 10:15 storytime that will be a great time. And people can come and wear costumes and show off their fun Halloween spirit. So also, I've brought something I want to share with you all that we have for checkout at the library. Don't know if you know, you can get a GoPro to check out at the library. Yeah, and these are not just the GoPro. It has a tripod and a float if you wanted to do underwater photography. It also has the head mount and a selfie stick with all of the attachments to go with it. They're pretty cool. They check out for a seven-day period. And as long as you have an adult library card, that's in good standing. So hopefully, we'll see you at the library sometime soon. Thanks so much. We're so glad to be part of the West Jordan community.
Thank you. That's not something I can check out online, so. That's a good one. That's what I do with most of my library books. All right, anybody else in the room would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, is there anybody online with a hand up, Mr. Anderson?
Not at this time. There are seven individuals online, none of whom have raised their hand.
All right, we'll go ahead and then close public comment, move to reports to council, and we'll start with the council reports. We'll go to Councilmember Green first because he pushed his button first.
Thank you. I was trying to, I was trying to remember anything that I had done the last two weeks since council, but the one that does stick out in my mind, except for the softball game, I got to get the jab into Derek and the fire department. They forgot to invite us to the softball game. But the, there was a fantastic activity that the police department held this last weekend in the park. I didn't get my, I didn't get a chance to take my grandkids over to the walk in the park with Historical Society. And I'm sure Warren's going to tell us about that one. But I did, grandpa got babysitting assignment for Saturday morning. And so we brought the two grandsons over to paint the pumpkin in the park with the police or whatever all the peas were. I don't know. Paint the pumpkin with police. And it was a good, it was a really good morning, thanks to the police. When I got there, and I won't steal Councilmember Whitelock's thunder because she was there. When I got there, she said the dog show is going on down the street. So I took the boys down and we got to watch the K-9 officers do their particular, their things. And it was amazing to see. I think they were there to help show off with the kids, but the adults were just as mesmerized and had just as many questions or more questions as the kids did. And so that was great. And then we went back and the two boys painted pumpkins. The best thing about that, that activity, if the council didn't know, and you might have seen it on Facebook, but the best thing about that activity didn't cost us anything, except for the salaries of the officers that were there. We had cadets that were supporting it. The pumpkins were donated by Schmitz over down the street, 90th South, and the paints and those things. I know Home Depot and some other people were involved in the donations, and so that was great. And got to meet some good officers, talk to them a little bit more, talk to a couple of the residents, and they loved the activity. So those are the kind of things that we need to keep going in the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock.
Oh, oh, thank you again. Sorry. As Councilmember Green mentioned, we both happened to be babysitting that day. So I took my grandchildren, but it was perfect because my grandchildren don't necessarily like people. And so we got there and the dog thing was going on. And Officer Rebecca, and I don't know her last name, but she was there and she interacted so well with two shy little children that hardly speak to anyone. And she did an amazing job and got them to actually voice something they verbalized to her, which usually they, the one usually gives you a stink eye and the other one gives you a yes or no. So she did a great job with interacting with my littles. Fields, I'm being told her last name is Fields. I appreciated the activity and just her willingness to get, not only did she interact, she got down on their level. And she did that with each child that came in during that time. The other shout out I have is that our code enforcement, I don't know what we call him, I'm going to call him a director, invited us to do a ride along with the new position that has been created. And I took advantage of that and gleaned some things. And he really just wanted our perspective, and it was great to get to know him just a little bit. And we talked a lot about the city and areas that I feel we could improve. We may have taken a little longer jaunt on into Taylorsville because I think they're doing an amazing job. And I wanted to show him some compare and contrast, so we did that. It was a great opportunity. So if you haven't had it yet, you might want to try to schedule that if you can in your schedule.
Councilmember Bloom.
I also attended the Faith in Blue breakfast, and I was quite inspired by that. What? Yeah. Yeah, it was, because it's such an importance of remembering and strengthening the bonds between the law enforcement and our faith-based communities. And it was a really great opportunity to hear open conversations about working together and fostering that trust and having that mutual respect and collaboration and seeing the needs that they need and having that direct line to the police there. In fact, I failed. I went home. I was so excited. I was telling my husband about it. He's like, well, who was there? We're looking for a new church. And I was like, oh, but I had to leave early. So I need names, mayor, because I was, I was just hyping that breakfast up so much that my husband really wants to check out some of the local churches here in West Jordan now. But later that morning at the All Wheels Park, that Saturday was just so, just a smile all day. What an amazing, significant milestone for the city. Having that inclusive space for the skaters and the cyclists and families. Clearly, the park's a huge hit, and I'm excited to see it become a bigger hub of activity and continue promoting outdoor recreation and, most importantly, community connection. So thank you, everybody involved in that project. It was, it's such a wonderful asset for our city.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to talk about our All Wheels Park as well. A lot of people like to call it the skate park, but there's more than just skating going on there. But it's been a week and a half since our grand opening, and I wanted to thank the staff for promoting it. A lot of people showed up, and I also want to thank our Parks Department for getting everything ready. And thank you for your future cleaning of that park because it's going to be a busy park. And I know already from what I've heard from Corbin is that the skaters and the bikers are really good about cleaning up after themselves. So I'm excited to hear that, that, you know, people love their parks, but they also will take care of them as well. And when Corbin gave kind of the opening speech about the Wheels Park, I didn't realize how much input you had on that. I know you didn't have all the input, but with you and with the people that you worked with, you know, someday we might need to name that the Corbin Lee All Wheels Park. So we'll think about that. Thank you.
He is the best skater on our staff, I think. Yeah. Councilmember Bedore.
I just wanted to take a moment. My schedule has been very, very hectic the last little while. And things, the opening up in November, and I'm looking forward to things like the ride along that Councilmember Whitelock had mentioned and some of the others that I've been meaning to try to get. But with that busy schedule, this last couple of weeks has probably been one of the busiest where I've had citizens call me up on the phone and talk to me about things. And it's been, it's been great because they're reaching out and I'm able to have that one-on-one talk with them right then and there and get notes. I'm able to, you know, talk to our council staff because right now, still being fairly new, even nine months into this, I always have a lot of questions. But I just want to thank the residents who are taking the time to call and those who are listening now or watching this later. Just know, and Councilmember Whitelock brought it up last, meaning that we are real people and we, we're here for you. You're the ones that put us in here. So call us up. I do, I've loved the last couple of weeks. They've all been very civil. There has been, there's only, only been a few of the the non-civil variety, but I take them all the same. And very grateful for citizens who take that time because they love the city as much as we do. So thank you, citizens.
Councilmember Shelton.
So I was regrettably out of town for the Wheels Park opening and the, and the prayer breakfast. But I was able to go on a ride along with animal control again. And the officer I went with, she recently dealt with a real rough situation where somebody had killed a pet that was under their care. And she told me how difficult that was, and I just would like to recognize our animal services officers and thank them for their dedicated service. Thank you.
Kent, was that the one that resulted in the felony charges?
All right, and I will just add, thanks to the vote of the council, I attended the Urban Land Institute Conference yesterday. And it was quite interesting. There's, it's a conference that's really kind of geared toward the developer industry and those types, but it was really good to be there and kind of get some insight into the challenges that that industry is facing. Labor is a huge problem. That is probably driving the cost of development and therefore the cost of housing and everything else, as much as anything else is a labor shortage, which is interesting. They kept talking about the election for some reason. I don't know why. As if that's going to have any effect on anything. About, they talked about supply chain delays that they're still suffering from COVID and now from the explosion of AI. Data centers are creating a huge demand on electrical generators. It's 75 weeks for electrical generators now. And these long lead times puts money at risk when they are working on their projections and their performas. Now they're having to put up more money, more upfront, and to purchase stuff that's not going to arrive for almost two years. But the greatest or the best and most applicable to the city class that I attended was called the Business Case for Designing Extraordinary Places. Really cool. Gave me a lot of neat insight into what we might do for some of the extraordinary places we're talking about developing or planning on. Lot of, lot of neat information. Anyway, I won't go through all my notes. I took three pages worth of notes and good, good stuff. So thank you for allowing me to attend that. And I highly recommend probably sending one or two council members every year to that. I think it'd be worth it just to get some insight into a lot of what we deal with on the council's development. So understanding the issues that that industry faces and how it affects what they're bringing to us, I think, is valuable. So that was fun. And I was also at the Wheels Park thing, and that was cool. And I haven't been past it since when the sun's been up, that there hasn't been several dozen people there. It is well-used. Even this morning at about 10:30, I rode past on my bike, but I, my bike is not geared toward that kind of riding. And there were still a couple dozen kids out there at 10:30 in the morning on a school day, so take that, take it for what it's for. Oh, it's UEA. Never mind. Just kidding. Or fall break. Fall break. Never mind. They're good kids. Okay, fine. All right, next up is the council office report. We'll go to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. You've received a couple emails from me about just some additions that we are going to propose to you in the near future with council rules and some of the little appendixes, appendices. We're also working on a style guide for how items are listed in Prime Gov, so there's some consistency as you're looking into packets and as the public is looking into packets. Once we get that finalized and get kind of a okay from the seven of you that those will work for you, then we'll share that with the rest of staff so that as we're entering packet information into Prime Gov and our agenda system that we have that information for you that's easily accessible. With that, I might turn some time over to Mr. Hallmark to just talk about the activity this week, this past weekend.
Just following up on the activity that Councilmember Green mentioned about the youth council, they continue to be active in the community, especially this month, the West Jordan Historical Society reached out and asked for some volunteers, and we were able to get nine of our youth to that activity this weekend, their pumpkin walk. So we were happy to help support them. And our adult volunteer advisor, Gage Broadhead, was there hanging out with them as well, so they had a good time. Thanks.
Excellent. That's it from our staff? Okay. Next up is the mayor's report, always entertaining mayor's report. Mayor Burton.
Well, thank you. I get to talk about some things you guys already talked about as well. So the first one is the Wheels Park grand opening. We estimated about 700 people showed up to that, including the council members who were there. Thank you for being there. And that has been real exciting. My son and grandkids from Idaho came down, so I sent them out there. Next thing I knew, my son was out buying a skateboard that he's going to keep at our house so they can go to the skate, this Wheels Park each time they come. And it's also fun when you see a couple of people in wheelchairs out there. So a lot of wheels getting used. So we are very excited about this, and you're right, there's somebody there every day. And I'm hearing lots of fantastic comments as I hear people out there using it, and they're coming from all over the place. So we probably ought to put in a little ice cream shop right next to it. Okay, maybe not. Okay, so while I'm on the road. Sorry, hit the button accidentally. So Salt Lake City International Airport had their Phase 3 unveiling. So what that means is that tunnel is open. As you go through that tunnel, as you come up the opposite side into where the B gates are, if you go look straight forward, as you're looking north, that center picture there, that's what you'll see. The artist calls that the Northern Lights, and as the light goes through there, it brings all these colors out of that glass sphere. It's huge, by the way, in case you can't tell by that picture, and it looks gorgeous. Then if you turn around at the top of that escalator, you will see this dinosaur. They call that dinosaur Alley because it's an Allosaurus, and that's where the name is Alley. And that is, of course, a replica of all the bones that they found over in the Vernal area. And they thought this would be appropriate for Utah at the Salt Lake City International Airport because we're so rich in dinosaur bones in Utah. So that's what those are. And that new tunnel, depending on where your gate is, could save you up to 15 minutes of walking time. Or it may not make no difference at all because before, if you went down the A column and then turned down the tunnel and turned left, it's the same distance. If you go straight, then turn left because the way geometry works, it works. But if you're going down that tunnel and turning right, this one will save you a great deal of time. However, just so you know, Salt Lake City does not have the longest walking, it's shorter than most other airports. Okay, and you talked about the pumpkin walk a little bit, so here's a couple of pictures from the pumpkin walk. It was full of volunteers over there, including the youth council, who were very good volunteers there. And there was a good showing there. You'll see the top left is the blacksmith, and he was making aluminum spiders out of a mold that he made out of steel. There's a lot more to it. Anyway, so that was a great experience. I'm glad to have that coming back. And they had volunteers from as far as Evanston out there. The guy you see with the goat, he brought that goat from Evanston, Wyoming, and had that there for the kids to see and passing out candy and treats for them. And we should swap these around, but the next one is the painting, pumpkin painting with police. And that was, as you already heard, a fantastic event, very good turnout. And Councilmember Whitelock was right. When everyone went to the police, it was nice and quiet in there for a few minutes. She was there just at the right time to have personalized attention. Okay, the next one is furniture roll is under construction. Woo-hoo! So you've seen the equipment out there. Have you seen those materials out there? Now it's actually going to town or coming to town. Anyway, we're happy to have furniture roll underway. Anticipated opening is late 2025. And the 8600 South Bridge is under construction again. We are so thrilled that progress is actually happening and is going forward. Anticipated open time for that is early next year. I know, I'm hesitant to say that, but I did. Upcoming events this Saturday, dumpster days, it'll be the last one for the year, so make sure you get all your trash, if you have anything left, and bring it out there. We take tires, and we didn't use to, we take tires now. We take steel and aluminum, and we take those and recycle them. We take green waste, they go into a special green waste dumpster, and mulch is made from that, so it doesn't go into the landfill. And then we take normal trash as well. So look forward to seeing you. Fortunately, the weather forecast looks good for Saturday. Friday, November 1st is our next.
Mayor, can I ask a question on dumpsters?
Yes.
Do we accept mattresses?
The official answer is no.
The head bobbing up and down in the back, so. Uh, the head bobbing up and down in the back, so yes.
Okay, so the official answer is still no.
No, okay.
People show up with them, we don't turn it away. We take it. They just fill the dumpsters up really fast. We don't promote it. And now I just said it, so it's been promoted. But so the official answer is no.
Okay.
On the on the flyer, it says we don't take them, but we don't turn them away if they show up with it.
Okay, thank you.
Answer, Brian? Okay. Okay, so first Friday, we look forward to seeing you there. That'll be November first. And it's the Intermezzo Chamber Orchestra. So if you miss it, you might get a little strung out. The city is sponsoring a blood drive. That'll be Monday, November fourth. It'll be at Pioneer Hall. So if you want to help save somebody's life by donating blood, it's open to the public and to our employees and everybody. So feel free to join us and donate some blood. Some of us are alive today because we've had blood that's helped us keep going, and I'm one of those. We're offering a free emergency preparedness class. We'd like you to join that. That's Monday, November fourth, from nine to three. Over at City Hall in the community room, Jeff puts those on. He does a fantastic job with that. And the more prepared we are, the less likely we are to have an emergency. So I recommend you come and join us there. And that is my report.
Thank you for that. We'll go to the city administrators' report now. Mr. Lee.
I have nothing further to add this evening. Thank you.
Oh, come on, you were at the Wheels Park. I saw you. Just kidding. Don't you want to? He did.
I waited till everybody else was gone, and then I got on a skateboard and rolled around. I love it. It I I you gave me an opening. Now I got to talk about it. It has been so exciting to see so many families out there. I was out there earlier today. There were six mothers of about a dozen to eighteen kids between two and eight years old, all of them on the little beginner pump track area alone. And just having a great time with these little mini bicycles and Strider bikes rolling around on that small beginner pump track. It was just, it's been a fun fun amenity in our in our recreation programming in the city.
And this is just Phase One, right? I mean.
Uh, this winter, we uh, we're working on adding a bathroom and lights, and we have money from Rio Tinto. We anticipate receiving a TRCC grant, and we received the park bond proceeds to do work at Ronwood Park. And so between those multiple revenue sources, plus hopefully some additional sponsorships, we'll proceed with additional phases starting in twenty twenty five.
Excellent.
Hey, can I just interject a question?
Yeah.
Thanks. A question about that bathroom. Somebody mentioned that there were people using wheelchairs out there. Is it going to be an ADA bathroom?
Uh, that's a great question. I think it has to be, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not to beat a dead wheel with a stick, but I'm glad to hear there's lights coming because that's going to be popular all night long in the summer. Um, all right. Next item on the agenda is our first public hearing. This is for ordinance twenty four dash forty six, amending the West Jordan City Code Title Seventeen for Alcohol Beverage Control and Uses. And we will go to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, council. This is an item that was discussed at the September Committee of the Whole Meeting. Reducing this title of code from thirty three to eight pages, removing repetitive state requirements that have now been removed. Making it easier for city-issued permits have been simplified. And Title Sixteen, which you discussed last committee of the whole meeting, is appropriately referenced and incorporated based upon what you decided at last meeting. So a little bit of background, which will help me explain the next steps, is the last time this was adopted by the city council was in August twenty fifth, twenty twenty one via ordinance number twenty one thirty one. And one of the provisions in that code was that Title Seventeen became a land use regulation that was not accurate. Or I'm sorry, that that was accurately adopted, but it didn't reflect in our code. And so this was prepared to come back to you for adoption tonight, but it is a land use regulation based on that prior ordinance adoption. And so tonight, you can discuss any questions that you have that may be a continuation. I would ask that you not take action on it tonight and simply do a procedural motion to refer it back to the Planning Commission. Once that is done, then it will come back to you. We'll do another public hearing and and we've already taken action to correct Title Seventeen as a land use regulation at the present time. So with that is what I have for this item.
Thank you for that. Uh, we do have a couple of questions from council before we go to the public hearing. Go to Councilmember Green.
I was going to say that's my that was my comment was when we made title, when we made Title Seventeen alcohol and we pulled it out of Title Thirteen, the intent was to not make it a land use ordinance. And that and the only part of Title Seventeen that's land use is the permitted use table. And and so I'm I'm thinking back, and I'm thinking we probably typed that in there, and it should have said not, and it we left it it said it was. So, uh, yes, please make sure as it comes back that we we don't do that as a land use ordinance, except for the table that defines permitted uses and locations in the city.
Is that a consensus of the body? I see. I see enough that it is. Thank you. Sure.
Uh, Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. There were just a few little things that I think we might want to clean up, and I'd like to voice those before we open the public hearing. The one is on line one fifty three. It says the mayor or city administrator may prepare. I would suggest we put in the mayor, city administrator, or designee. That is consistent with what we're doing in code and other places. And that just gives them the the flexibility. Then I'm pay on line, and I'm looking at the clean version. And I've sent these to Patrick already. It could be mayor or designee. Yeah. I just think the designee part is probably helpful. And then we go to line one ninety and ninety one. And we just have put in the word in twice. I would suggest we delete one of those. And then on one lot on line one ninety five, and I think this is just maybe one of my idiosyncrasies, but um, if we're going to have one comma, we need to have a second one. So it says alcohol will be stored, comma, served. It needs to have a comma and then sold. So just easy things. Yeah, yep, Oxford comma. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
My only question was for Council Director Anderson. So we're having the public hearing tonight on this. Um, it's going to go back to the Planning Commission. So we have to have another public hearing again on this?
You don't have to. This would satisfy the requirement of a public hearing, but I would recommend a public hearing when it comes back from the Planning Commission.
And the recommendation is because if if we don't need it, why have another public hearing?
My recommendation is to have another public hearing.
Okay.
All right. So with that, if there is anybody who would like to speak to this, we will open a public hearing now, at the very least. And give you the opportunity. This follows the same rules as the public comment period earlier. You have up to three minutes to speak. Um, if you're online, you need to raise your hand on the Zoom, click the button so we know you want to speak. And if you are in person, you may rush the podium. Don't trip over each other or knock anybody down. Come up in a nice orderly fashion, and we'll give you three minutes. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm not seeing anybody rushing, knocking anybody down at the podium. So, Mr. Anderson, is there anybody online indicating a desire to speak?
There are five individuals online, none of whom have raised their hand to speak.
All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then. And we will bring it back to the council for a procedural motion. Councilmember Whitelock.
Yeah, I move that we send ordinance number twenty four twenty six back to the Planning Commission.
Forty six.
Forty six. Thank you. Twenty four forty six.
I second the motion.
All right, a motion from Councilmember Whitelock, seconded by Councilmember Shelton. Is there discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, rule that's unanimous, and we'll send that back to the Planning Commission and get it on a future council agenda. Uh, after this item now, we go to item six B on the agenda. Uh, public hearing for ordinance twenty four dash forty four, amending the West Jordan City Code Sections eight dash fifteen dash four and seven five two regarding naming principles and placement of parks, public spaces, monuments, and street name changes. Mr. Anderson.
I'm going to preface this with one sentence from the last item. Mr. Langford reminded me that the alcohol ordinance is on Planning Commission for November nineteenth. Going on to twenty four forty four, this is being brought to you in partnership with the council office and the attorney's office. Um, in the past, the council has renamed a couple streets. Um, and as part of that, some council members had expressed concern regarding existing code language. Uh, the city council will not approve names that are complex, unduly long, difficult to spell, or difficult to pronounce, derogatory, or offensive. Legal staff and the council office have suggested specific word deletions to remove constitutional ambiguity. Um, there we also simplified it following kind of a style guide with not doing double numbers, so spelling out the number and putting in the digits. Um, so line seventy five and seventy six remove the ambiguous wording while maintaining government speech. And then on seven five two, which is the street name change, we simply added language referencing the general naming principles so that renaming a street will follow. We have a consistent naming guideline. Uh, line forty seven clarifies that fees are uh, city imposed but may not include all fees. There may be non-city entities that may charge, especially when it's a UDOT road or Salt Lake County Road. Um, and line forty nine and fifty informs applicants that non-city agencies may charge fees for street renaming, depending on who owns what part of the roadway. And these are minor changes. I it didn't. I didn't feel it was necessary to go to a committee of the whole. You are obviously welcome to refer that back for further discussion if you would like. These are just some minor changes to eliminate constitutional ambiguity.
Thank you. Questions for staff before the public hearing? We'll go Councilmember Bloom.
There's just a few things. Um, the consistency with the head headings, some of them end with periods, some of them don't. So just that consistency. And then same with the capitalization of the sections. Um, memorial and monument are caps are capitalized in definitions, just but some of the sections they're not. That's just just little things like that.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Um, I have a question. I don't really know who will answer this, but on the clean version on line fifty nine, it says there must be a high level of community support for the proposal. How are we determining high level? Because I look back at the daughters of the American Revolution. Was that a high level of public? How do we determine that? If that? I don't know how you do that. So it's in here. Who's going to answer my question?
I'm going to see if Mr. Boyce can do that. Line fifty nine.
Am I on? There I am. Uh, just for the record, Mr. Chandler just stepped out. He knew this was coming, I guess. I my 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 opinion on this, Councilmember Whitelock, would be this. Whatever you think is is high demand or 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 a high level request, right? If that's two hundred people and and you have a a large group that that really wants it, and it's it's that important, I think that would satisfy the requirement. I think if it's ten and it's close family and friends because of a child like Eli Mitchell, I I think that you could consider that to be a a high demand. I I think that that we don't want to box you in or or the city in for a worthy cause by placing a set number on it. I think it's it's meant to be subjective for the cause, for the request, based on the circumstances, and allow you in in your good judgment to to make that call.
Okay, thank you. My other one is when we go down to lines one thirteen through one sixteen. When I read this, I want to know how that's going to affect like, I think for the Community Arts Building, we'd like to be able to have um, perhaps put someone's name on there if they wanted to give us a lot of money. But in my mind, I'd want it to be more like the Delta Center. It was the Delta Center, then it was something else. Now it's the Delta Center again, and that's because it went to the highest bidder. And to me, this looks like it would preclude that. Am I reading it right or wrong? When it's when it's legal forms, I always want to verify because y'all are tricky.
Uh, if I while he's looking that up, if I if I can jump in, there may be some ambiguity with that because in lines one seventeen to one nineteen, it just says buildings may be named after or dedicated in honor of a person, group, or entity in recognition of significant contributions to the West Jordan community. And that's been referred to me that that would allow like the art center to have a sponsorship, but they do seem like they conflict in my mind.
Yeah. So that's why I'm asking.
I so my my reading of it, and if I'm reading it right, it's on, starting on line one twelve, the names of buildings, facilities, or parts thereof generally shall not change during the life of the building. I think it's that generally that that I would kind of hang my hat on and say, you know, generally, we we don't want it, right? Even if the art center were to be named or the rodeo grounds were to be named. Um, we we don't want that to be a yearly change.
You know, if the Burton family decides they're going to donate their millions for the name.
It gen generally, we would not want it to change the year after that. Uh, so I I think that that there's value in in having some consistency without the the rigidity that that should never be changed. We we generally don't want it.
So that generally is the is the key word. See, you have tricky words. Thank you.
No magic words, but tricky words, maybe.
Councilmember Green.
Slightly off topic, but it goes to the naming of the road. If anybody's driven down Ninety is South, UDOT has signs put up, and they promised that they would put up that fifteen ten west is Eli Mitchell Way, and it shows fifteen ten west right now. So if you if the administration can take a look at that, that would be nice.
UDOT has reached out and is in the process of scheduling a date for us, and as soon as that date is known, we will pass it on to the council. So we expect to hear from them sometime this week or next week, and then we'll know. I can warn you that UDOT is planning to do it at after hours when traffic is less on the street to cause less interference. So it will not be during the daytime hours. That's 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 what I know so far.
All right.
It could be.
To, all right, any other clarifying questions for staff before we open the public hearing to kind of steer this ship back on track? Councilmember Shelton.
I spoke with Council Director Anderson about this. I I was concerned about the removal of the language that says unduly long. Um, say like on a street, street sign. If it was too long, then maybe they'd have to shrink the font so small that you wouldn't be able to read it from a a car. And so he assured me that that staff would be able to keep that sign title short enough on their own without that being in code. But it was a concern I had, and so I wanted to bring it up to the council.
Okay, that's actually let's let's save the discussion then for after the public hearing, though. And let's go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anybody who would like to speak to this. Um, now is your opportunity. You have three minutes, as with other items on the agenda and with the public comment earlier. Then once again, be orderly. Don't knock each other over, both of you. And we'll go ahead and call the public hearing open. If there's anybody in the room who'd like to address the council. Is there anybody online, Mr. Anderson, who's has a who has indicated a desire to speak?
Uh, Chair, there are six individuals online, none of whom have raised their hand to speak.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, although it is always interesting to notice how the number of people online fluctuates throughout the meeting. And bring it back to the council now for discussion and motions, et cetera. Councilmember Green.
I'm going to move to approve ordinance number 24-44.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Green, a second in the microphone by Councilmember Whitelock. If you feel really strongly about that, you can appeal the ruling of the chair. And we'll go to discussion to the motion. There was one thing that I wanted to mention. I mean, if we were talking about it, in line 77 and 75, it says, "The city council will not approve names that blah, 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 blah." Do we really want to pigeonhole all future councils by what we will and will not do? Can the code, can the code tell the city council what they can do? Because all the city council has to do is say, oh, by the way, I want to change this code and then name this street that. So telling a city council that, or putting it in code to say the city council will or will not, I think something like this probably belongs better in an informational pamphlet you give somebody when they come in with this application. You say, here's some guidelines you might want to consider. City council typically will not consider something that is immediately adjacent to local government areas or, you know, duplicating a name or something. But you never know. We have Thomas Emery's Courthouse out here next door. We might want Thomas Emery Street next to it. Maybe. Maybe not. And, you know, but it says, "The council will not," but maybe the council wants to. So anyway, I don't like code binding, trying to bind councils because it can't. So that's just my two cents. Anyway, I'll still speak in favor of the motion because I don't think it's that big of a deal. Any further discussion to the motion? I think we had our discussion before the public hearing. Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Thank you. I show the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent to approve meeting minutes and Resolution 24-37, oh, 37.
Move to approve consent items.
Second.
There you go. All right, motion by Councilmember Green to approve the consent items, seconded by Councilmember Bloom. Is there a discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's roll call vote this one.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes seven to zero.
Move to adjourn the committee of the hall. Okay, we have a motion.
I beat you. Second.
Oh, there we go. We're sticking with only motions made into microphones. So Councilmember Green made the motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Shelton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We will convene a committee of the hall at 7:00.
I want you to notice that the council meeting all...